Okay, council, it is seven o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, just as liberty as justice for all.
Thank you all so very much, and welcome to our first meeting for the month of September. Time is sure flying by fast. On up next on the agenda, we have our roll call. Ms. Martinez.
Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Counselor Daniel.
Here.
Counselor Carson. You're on mute, Counselor Carson.
Here.
Counselor Grego.
Present.
Counselor Beho.
Here.
Counselor Broyles.
Here.
Counselor Hensley.
Here.
All counselors present in a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you so very much. Up next, we have the agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
Counselor Beho.
Yes.
Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
Counselor Carson.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Up next on the agenda, we have our citizen comments. This is the part of the agenda where we allow any citizens who are wishing to speak to make comments up to a three-minute time limit. We will ask you to end your conversation if you're still talking at the three-minute mark. So at this time, Ms. Martinez will give those who would like to make comments instructions of how to join the 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 meeting and unmute yourself.
Yep. Okay, so if you are on the Zoom app, you should see a raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. You click that, that will let me know that you wish to speak during this time. So if you can do that right now, that'd be great. If you're on the telephone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And I know a few of you submitted comment cards. If you could still raise your hand, I'd appreciate it if you want to talk. Okay, so I've got quite a few that raised their hands. So I'll start at the top. We have Helen Sigmund at the top.
This is Helen Sigmund, 16 Cottonwood Place, Alamosa, Colorado. And I'm making a comment about a proposal to have city council relieve the police or your city officials from enforcing the mask mandate. And I'm opposed to that. And I just want to start by saying what the current mask mandate is. It doesn't actually state that you have to wear a mask outdoors unless you're waiting on a public or a non-personal transportation. It recommends that you wear a mask whenever you can't keep a safe distance of at least six feet from other people. And they're that we're all encouraged to wear a mask whenever we can in crowded spaces, whether we're indoors or outdoors. But my concern is that we, especially as elected officials, support the rules and not send a confusing message. So many people are confused by what the rule is, and that's why I started by reading that. So it seems to me that when we start saying, oh, you, you know, we're not going to enforce this, or we're not going to enforce that, that only gets more and more confusing. Obviously, the science has stated clearly that following mask wearing and social distancing, we've been able to reduce the curve. We have, we've noticed at the county that when we have outdoor holidays, activities, sometimes those are the ones that increase our spikes. We had a spike after Memorial Day. We had a spike after the Fourth of July. So I don't want to have the community confused by telling them that we're not going to enforce an order at some time. So the last order was entered August 14th. It's good for 30 days. And we'll probably be hearing from the governor after that. But please continue to enforce the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund. Ms. Helen Sigmund is Alamosa County Commissioner. We always like to recognize our county commissioners and other electoral issues when they have a voice here on city council. Thank you. Okay.
The next person I have up is Bob.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. We can hear you now.
My name is Bob Rice. I'm a recently retired physician. And I wanted to address just a couple of issues with regard to mask wearing. One of them is that people will tell me, well, I'm confused. One, one person says one thing, another person says another, there's no consensus. What, what am I supposed to do? But actually, the findings of more and more observational studies all point in the same direction. And that is that masks, masks are helpful. Just recently, the British Medical Journal, Lancet, and Nature Medicine all published studies which support mask use. And not only are they, do they point in the same direction, it's relatively the same magnitude with a 50 to 75 to 80% reduction of infection. The people that do these, this research that are published in peer-reviewed journals are good people. They're, they don't have, they don't have an ongoing bias. Sure, somewhere along the line, you can find a medical study or two that wasn't entirely honest, but but those are very, very, very rare. These studies are performed by virologists, physicians, mathematicians, statisticians, all doing their best to find the truths. And the truths and and again, their studies seem to be pointing in the same direction. Masks are effective. Magnitude of their effectiveness is roughly in line with one another. I, and personally, I think that I'm a cancer survivor. And my wife is currently undergoing some cancer treatment. And, you know, with the COVID epidemic, it is important for all of us to take care of one another. And if the, if the, if the honest evidence points to the effectiveness of masks, then we should take an effort to wear masks. That's it.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Okay, next one is Kevin Daniel.
Thank you, Holly, and thank you, Mayor Coleman and council. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Again, my name is Kevin Daniel, and I live at 732 Weber Drive here in Alamosa. I appreciate the opportunity to share my comments with you regarding the proposed agenda item seeking to relieve the city from enforcing the state public health orders mandate to wear masks at outside events. I am personally against this proposal, and I'll be brief with the three primary concerns that I have. First, if the city were to choose to no longer enforce this component of the public health order or other parts of the public health order, this would send a mixed message to our community. We have guidance from local, state, and federal public health agencies, as well as significant scientific research that outlines effective tools to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. Masks and face coverings are one of the most effective tools that help us in the fight against this virus and allow us to resume more of our daily activities in a safer fashion. Second, it's imperative to continue with preventative measures and risk mitigation techniques, not reduce them. As the local data from public health indicates, the San Luis Valley region is doing a good job in slowing the spread of the virus. Now is the time to continue using all the tools available to slow the spread, not relax them. Third, I believe the city of Alamosa must remain a committed partner in striving to, in striving to encourage a foster of a community of care. As you know, many of our community businesses and institutions have fully enacted the requirement of wearing a mask or face covering to keep, help keep our community safe, as well as other key prevention measures. The city of Alamosa plays a vital role in supporting and protecting our community members and choosing to no longer educate and enforce when necessary. The public health order would jeopardize the safety of all and could have drastic and devastating impacts, economic impacts if an outbreak were to occur that we could have helped prevent. Thank you for your time, and I greatly appreciate your consideration and your dedication to serving the citizens of Alamosa.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, next I have Mandy Pittman.
Hello, Mayor Coleman and council. My name is Mandy Pittman. I live at 94 Monterey Avenue here in Alamosa. I am coming to you today as the director of the Alamosa Farmers Market, an outdoor event that runs Saturdays throughout the season. And we are in the midst of holding the market in a COVID world. What I would like to say is I really urge the council to please continue enforcing this mandate. The, the market went through a lot of work this season to be able to open. And as, at the time, considered it an essential business. We've, we've done a lot of changes to our normal market protocol to have the market and follow the COVID restrictions that are in place. We would like our market to continue to be as safe as possible, and we feel that the, the, a huge way that that is accomplished is by having our customers, staff, and vendors wear masks while they are in the market space. We do support the mask wearing additionally for those who are unable to wear masks by having hand washing stations at the market and by encouraging social distancing as well. But the masks are something we would like to see not go away because what I fear would happen is once that restriction is changed, then people will think, okay, COVID's done, we're home free, and I fear that they will, folks will go back to not washing their hands as much or not keeping a distance from each other. The masks are a very visible symbol that we are trying to protect those who are more vulnerable than we are. And I feel like it's a very helpful measure. I'm not going to quote studies. You've heard several of them already. But I feel like as a small business proprietor that I would really support the city continuing to have the mask ordinance in place. And additionally, if there was a time to consider it, my suggestion would be to, to wait until two weeks after Labor Day and see if there's any sort of surge from another holiday weekend, as we've seen after Fourth of July and Memorial Day. And that might give a better indication of where we are health-wise in the valley. And, you know, that potentially could be a time to reevaluate the mask ordinance. But for the time being, I really urge the city council to keep the mask ordinance, ordinance as it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mandy.
Okay, next I have Christopher Lopez.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I wanted to speak to the mask ordinance and on behalf of Adam State University. Let me, I should, I apologize, I should introduce myself. It's Chris Lopez, I'm at 825 Third Street, Alamosa, Colorado. I come this evening to talk about mask ordinance and ask the city council to keep its mask enforcement in place and to not relieve city staff from enforcing the health mandate to wear masks outdoors. As you know, Adam State University requires masks on during all times on campus, in the classroom, and outdoors. And we're extremely proud of the compliance of that requirement by our students and our staff and our faculty over these past two weeks as we've begun the fall semester. We think the city would send the wrong message to the campus community by not requiring and enforcing masks to be worn outdoors. As Dr. Roberts talked about earlier, every piece of evidence shows the importance and effectiveness in wearing masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19. In fact, just this evening, I received an email from the Department of Higher Education encouraging me to reach out to, to all of you, to the city, to ask if we can collaborate in jointly put together public service campaign to continue to educate the community on the importance of mask wearing, particularly with outdoor gatherings and particularly in groups. And so I would invite the city to join Adam State in helping spread the message through a public service campaign to help educate on the importance of masks and the effectiveness of wearing masks during this period of time. Thank you, and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, next I have Luke. I believe this is Luke Yoder.
It is. Yeah, this is Luke Yoder. I hope everybody's got me here. Again, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to be able to speak briefly. And I'm speaking, wearing a couple of hats. First, I'm an individual citizen here in the community at 109 Poncha. Second, I'm the director of a local nonprofit that serves the six counties of the valley, but is headquartered here in Alamosa, called the Center for Restorative Programs. And third, I'm involved with a couple of businesses in Del Norte, the Windsor Hotel and Dining Room, and then also 1874 Distilling. And as someone who's involved in many different facets of the community, as people have mentioned already, there are some really serious things that are potentially going to be impacted through any decision about masks. I think the primary decision that we all have in front of us is a moral one. I think it's important for us to consider how we can protect one another, how we can look out for one another, how we can make sure we're taking care of one another. I think that's what community is about. I think that's what you all as councilmen and councilwomen have signed up for is really, how do we look out for the best of our community? How do we create a community that's as effective and welcoming and looking out for one another as possible? And so there's been a number of reasons that have been stated already that I won't go into about why masks help us to do that. But I think it's important just to recognize that portion of this decision. The other thing I think is really important is putting on a little bit more of a pragmatic hat. And that is that I think for our businesses to stay open, and as you've heard from folks at Adam State University, the only way for this to work is for us to do things that will help to slow the spread of this virus and help to mitigate the transmission of it and the potential transmission of it. And in my opinion, one very simple, easy, cost-effective, low-stress way to do that is by wearing masks. Again, for us to be able to serve our clients at the Center for Restorative Programs, we need to make sure that we're able to provide a safe environment for our staff and for the people that we serve. And masks are one simple way for us to do that. As a business owner, as somebody who has a lot of financial investment in the success of business in our community in Del Norte, we aren't going to be able to stay open unless this whole valley does its part to make sure that we are slowing the transmission of this disease. And in particular, that we look like we are trying to do that. A mask, taking away some of the enforcement of the mask ordinance, I believe will prevent tourism from coming here. I believe will prevent people in our community from feeling safe traveling. And that will really impact all of the businesses in Alamosa, as well as throughout the valley. So again, I just want to voice my support for the existing enforcement of the mask ordinance, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Luke.
Okay, next I have Erin.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to provide a few comments this evening. I'm coming to you today from a couple of different perspectives. So I live at 8125 South River Road. And I also work at the Boys and Girls Club. And I want to talk a little bit kind of from both of those perspectives. And, and as somebody, Mr. Lopez did a great job of voicing the issues concerning Adam State University. But I'm also really concerned about what the consideration of non-enforcement on this ordinance could do for all those folks engaged in learning in school and out of school time in our community. I think you've, you've heard studies, obviously, you're, you're smart folks, and you've read a lot yourself. I think we would be remiss to say that there is a unified voice in terms of what folks believe is the best course of action in terms of marrying, wearing masks. And I think that that confusion has really led to some states and some areas really falling behind the curve and having massive problems with COVID-19 coronavirus outbreaks that have, you know, dramatically affected those people who are most at risk. And those people, sorry, and those businesses and those communities. So I, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time. I just want to say, from a Boys and Girls Club perspective, we have found it difficult enough to ask families to help us in encouraging young people to wear masks to try to protect themselves and their loved ones. I think specifically, we think about how important it is for our community that we not lose any more businesses. We've left, lost enough over the last five months. We don't need to lose anymore. And, and taking a simple, responsible action like wearing a mask is something that we can all do to keep businesses open, to keep our economy flowing, and to keep our, our populations safe. So I, I want to just add one more thing, which is to say that I think many of these comments are, are talking about support of maintaining the ordinance. And I just want to say that I think it is dangerous to consider and the removal of the enforcement of that ordinance. And, and I would ask council to please not open this up for public comments because I think even just opening it up for to, to be passed for a public comment is dangerous to our community and will have a negative impact on our businesses, the health of our community members, and organizations that are youth-serving and college-age-serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay, next I have somebody from SOVA Hack. I'm not sure who it is. So if you can, please state your name.
Yes, this is Charlotte Ladoni. I live at 7789 El Rancho Lane here in Alamosa County. I'm a nurse by background. I have a vested interest in public health. I manage a harm reduction program, and I would like to introduce the perspective of harm reduction into our community for our public health and safety in that we already have a number of public health harm reduction measures that we use on a daily basis. We ask people to wear seat belts. We ask people to wear helmets, use car seats for their children. And so I'm coming from a perspective, not as an individual, and whether I would like to wear a mask or not, but as a public health person that really looks at the health of our community. So my wearing a mask is not to protect me, it's to protect the rest of our community. And so that to me is a harm reduction strategy. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Okay, now we have Ron Brink. Go ahead, Ron. You should be able to speak now. I see you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Ron, it appears you're muted again. Okay, it looks like you're unmuted. Can you? We can't hear you, though.
Ms. Martinez, would you give instructions one more time since we're, we want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak because this will be the last part of the agenda to where people can actually speak? Can you give those instructions of how to unmute themselves and, and how to make sure that they are able to talk where council can hear them?
Yeah, so when you are allowed in to speak, you should have a mute button. It'll say that you're on mute, and you can click on mute, and then you should be able to speak. If you haven't talked and you do still wish to speak, you need to use the raise your hand feature in the Zoom app. That should be at the bottom of your screen. So if you click that, then I'll get that. If you're on the telephone dial star nine, it'll raise your hand for you. And Ron, I'm not sure if you're, whatever, if you're using an app, if your microphone's not working, but you can always dial in and see if you can speak that way.
So how about we go to the next person in line for now until Mr. Brink gets it figured out on his end.
Okay, so it looks like only have one more person requesting to speak, and that's Luisa C.
Hi, my name's Luisa Cheslock. I live at 805 10th Street here in Alamosa. And I, I work at the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm also speaking on the ordinance about stopping enforcing the mask wearing. I'm not going to repeat what others have said so far. But I want to say that we really should consider the timing of this, especially as our schools start reopening. And if we are stopping enforcing the mask wearing in the outdoor groups, I'm just thinking about how many more of our kids might be bringing COVID into the classroom or from the classroom. And if this is something we do need to consider, that we should wait until several weeks after all the schools in the valley have been back in session. Thank you.
Thank you, Luisa.
So I have a phone number ending in 1981. I'm going to allow them to talk. 1981, if you can dial *6, it'll unmute you.
Or was it *9, Holly?
*9 to raise their hand. *6 should unmute them.
Oh?
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Leroy Chacon, and I live at 1319 Second Street. I'm a 70-year-old male. I'd like to talk about my experience. I'm a COVID survivor. I had, ended up with COVID around June 6th from, I got it from my place of employment. And then about, guess what? Four days, five days later, I gave it to my wife. And it was a tough road to travel. At first, I was worried about myself mentally, figuring what's going to be the next step? Am I going to go to a hospital, or am I going to die? As time went forward, I found out that my wife had the COVID. I gave it to her, and doubled the problem, doubled the worry. And then, to top it off, where we got it from, another employee that worked at the place where one of the clients brought it in, I used to work for a bandage treatment center, brought it into the center. That's what happened to her, she's 51 years old. She died at the same time we got, same place. Yes, she expired, she died. So now I was really worried, what's going to happen to me and my wife? My wife is a higher risk due to the fact that she has rheumatoid arthritis, so that puts her in higher risk. And we are both at 70 years old, that puts us both in higher risk. So my belief, and I strongly believe from my heart, bottom of my heart, by wearing a mask, social distancing, washing your hands, if we could do that and save 1%, only 1% from not getting COVID virus, then we, it's all worth it. Only 1% is all worth it. That mask is worth it to wear. And that's about all I got to say.
Thank you very much, Leroy.
So let me see if Ron Brink can speak again. Let's see. Ron, can you try to speak? Doesn't look like your microphone's working.
So Ms. Martinez, was if the microphone's not working, should he try to just call in on the phone line?
Yeah, if he can call in on the phone, then we can get him on. The number that you'll dial to get on the phone is 1408. Oh, it looks like he's connecting to audio now. Maybe he wasn't connected. But the number he's going to call is 1408-638-0968. And then the webinar ID is 88343257202. So it looks like he jumped off. Maybe he's going to call in. So I'll, I have one more person with their hand raised, it's Josh Blinkenship.
Hi, Josh Blinkenship here, 3003 West Liquid Drive here in town. I'm fully supportive of wearing masks. I just don't think it should be mandated or enforced. I think we're open up Pandora's Box when we decide that we're going to enforce those type of things. I've heard examples of seatbelts and car seats, and those are all personal responsibilities that are very, very important. I think when we go down the path of trying to create new legislation, new mandates, new enforcement, I think we're creating a whole lot of divisiveness within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
I do, I do not have any more hands raised. I don't know if Ron Brink was going to try and call in again, but I don't see him back in yet.
Okay, so we've given instructions several times on how to have people raise their hands, and we always want to make sure that the citizens have an opportunity to voice their concerns during this time. So now we're at the part of the agenda where, since we don't see any other hands raised, we would now turn it over to our staff for comments.
Mayor, we do not have any comments.
Okay, thank you very much. We will be discussing this item later in the agenda for those of you who are still in attendance. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Councilor Hensley?
Yes.
Councilor Greco?
Yes.
Councilor Bejo?
Yes.
Councilor Royals?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. But next on the agenda, under regular business, we have business brought forward by our city staff, parks and recreation, recreation center, and trail update.
Thank you, Mayor, and I see Andy has unmuted himself as well. We're going to be partnering on this. So Andy, which one should I start preparing to share my screen as you give a little bit of an intro?
Sure, I think we're going to start with Jess and the Rec Center opening update. So good evening, Mayor, Council, everybody. Pleased to give you a Parks, Recreation, and Library update after Jess and John share information that was presented to the Community Recreation Advisory Board a little while ago. Then I'll give you a little bit of update on the library, too, which if you're really up to date on your city email, you might already have gotten a hint on what's going on over there. So without further ado, let's see if we can get Jess narrating while Heather shares our reopening plans here.
Hi, this is Jess Jolly. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. Good evening, all. Thank you for having me tonight. It is, it is my pleasure to share the reopening plan for the Alamosa Family Recreation Center. So as of August 17th, we did open the recreation center to individual workouts. And Heather, if you could go to the next slide, please? Um, so. Yeah, if we could stay on slide two for a sec. Um, so these are our key guidelines that we're asking of folks as they, as they enter the recreation center and use our facility. A mask is required at all times, so from, from when folks enter the facility to working out and then to leaving. It may not be the most pleasant thing, but it is an opportunity for folks to access our facility. We are requiring reservations. Right now, we're using signupgenius.com. It's a very simple website, signup system, it's great. Folks can also call us at the Rec Center, and we'll add them to those lists. We can accommodate up to 30 guests per hour, and the little chart there shows you what our schedule looks like. So we have hour-long workout sessions, and we have eight of those per day. And in between each workout session, we have a 30-minute period that is a passing period for, for one group of folks to exit and another group of folks to enter. That also gives our staff time to walk through the workout spaces and wipe down the machines that were used to make sure everything is safe and clean for the next folks. Right now, we only have a limited amount of equipment available and a limited amount of our rooms. I will walk you through those rooms here in just a second. Right now, restrooms and a water bottle filler are available, but we, we have the locker rooms and showers closed for now. When folks enter the facility, they are asked to sign a waiver upon purchasing either a day pass or when they're renewing their membership. We do ask them questions about any symptoms, so they have to clear that. Before folks walk down the hall, they are provided with a spray bottle with disinfectant and a clean towel to kind of put their safety in their own hands. I know I feel better cleaning the equipment before I use it and then also leave it better than you found it type of thing. Also, we've scheduled more staff than we normally do to make sure that we, we have the front desk manned and also that we're keeping up with, with all the cleaning that that needs to be done. So can we go to the next slide? Thank you. So this is our front entryway. We have clearly marked entrance and exit doors. We ask very kindly that folks put on their mask. Once inside the door is a hand sanitizing station. You can click to the next slide if you like. There's that hand sanitizing station. And when we do have more than one person in our entryway, we ask that folks advance along those green Xs on the floor. All right, I think we can click to the next slide, please? So this is a view of our main hallway. Right now, we have everything behind that tape blocked off for public use. To the left-hand side, you can see our water bottle filling station. That is accessible. We do have those water fountains covered just to discourage use there. And then that restroom that's on the left, it's a little hard to see, it is open for public use. Next slide, thank you. This is the hallway that leads to our locker rooms. Right now, we just have that closed off. Potentially in a later phase, we will explore opening that section in the building. Okay, the fun stuff. So this is what our cardio room now looks like. We have a capacity for seven people inside this, this room. Each treadmill, from the center of the treadmill to the next one is 10 feet. We also have each piece of equipment gridded out in a nice square or rectangle, so folks can feel a little more comfortable within their space. Let's see. Okay, next slide, please. This is our second room. This is our fitness room. It can accommodate three people. We have three fitness stations there with various equipment. And if we go to our next slide, that's where most of our stuff is. So if you can imagine, most of the equipment in this room was all in the cardio room. It kind of blows me away. But in this room, we have seven ellipticals, seven weight machines, and then various recumbent bikes, rowing machine, and then we've added three stations with free weights and also an app station. So of those three free weight stations, one accommodates folks who want more lighter weights, the second station, more of a medium-sized weight, and then back in that fitness room, there's actually, that station is the heavy weight. So if you're pumping some iron, you can do it, you can do it there. Okay, next slide. All right, this is just a different perspective of the, of the multipurpose gymnasium. Right now, we are not activating the main gym or the meeting rooms. However, we are looking at those spaces as well as the upper track there in potential Phase Two coming, hopefully in the next few weeks.
So we do have two presentations. So this one is obviously Jess doing what staff spent a lot of time to get the Rec Center ready to be open to the public. And so I think Andy and I, one, just wanted Council to be able to see, you know, there are ways to do this safely, but also to give us an opportunity to thank Jess and everyone else at the Rec Center for really reading what the requirements are, working with Della, and then figuring out how to make this work, move all the equipment, measure it off, do all of that. It took a lot of time to, to make sure that this was done safely. So before we have John kind of do his presentation on trails and outdoor rec, is there any questions for Andy or Jess on what she reviewed?
All right, I think we can move on to John.
I'm sorry, Councilor Hensley has her hand up.
I don't really have questions. I just really want to commend the staff for everything they've done. It looks fantastic. I agree with Jess, it's hard to believe all that equipment was in that other room earlier. But anyway, just thank you for all your hard work to make this happen.
Thank you, Liz.
All right, John, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Can folks hear me? All right. I didn't hear any response.
Yes, we can hear you, John, sorry.
Awesome, all right. All right, well, thank you, Council. Thank you, Heather, for giving me the opportunity to talk about the work that our outdoor recreation and Parks team is, is doing. I think it's a really exciting time for outdoor recreation in the midst of not great pandemic times, but outdoor recreation has definitely become more relevant as people have been looking for safer ways to, to get exercise and get their recreation in. So I know that anecdotally speaking, it seems like the trails and outdoor spaces in Alamosa have really exploded in use in the last several months. So first, I'm just going to give a quick programmatic update of what we've been doing this summer, and then lead into more of our outdoor recreation infrastructure projects and capital projects that we've been working on as well. So first, the main program that we've ran this summer that we've been able to is Weekends on the Rio. We redesigned the program, as you can see, with social distancing twist to it. We found ways to redesign the program so that it's more self-guided outdoor activities for families to do on their own time. And we created this past, this activity passport program for kids. And kids, kids and families and members of the same household can do stuff together outside and earn stamps in their passport, and then at the end of the year, they, they turn it in for potential prizes. And we did also run some outdoor activities like boating at Blanca Vista Park and Zumba and yoga in the park, and archery, all with social distancing and mask-wearing and sanitizing in mind. So we had distributed 110 of these passports to kids in the community and had about 170 in-person participants throughout the summer with their programs. So, yeah, next slide, please. Another thing that we've continued on is our partnership with Boys and Girls Club. We've been doing We've been doing weekly outdoor rec programs with them, archery, fishing, orienteering, just getting those kids into our parks and open spaces and something we continue to do with Boys and Girls Club as the start of the summer. Excuse me, the start of the school year is delayed a little bit. So yeah, that's just a quick update on what we've been doing programmatically. If you could go to the next slide. We've been making a lot of progress on outdoor recreation amenities and trails this summer. This is really exciting stuff for me and for our community. We redesigned all of the trail maps for the city. This is the new redesign. It's available at almoserect.org. All these trail maps are available in PDF for download. And so that's been one project. We have new maps for the City Ranch. You'll see in a minute, we have one for the Almosa Riparian Park and one for the new Malm Trail Network. So I'll just highlight some of the projects that we've had, starting with the City Ranch. So if you go to the next slide, Heather, this is some images of boating. There are potential spots for boat launches on the Rio Grant. We've secured funding from the Colorado Water Conservation Board, roughly $55,000 to build a series of boat ramps, one at the North River Pavilion, which is up by the disc golf course, and then one down here at the State Avenue Bridge. We also have a pending grant for Greater Doors Colorado, their Resilient Communities Grant Program, which is in direct response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So we made the pitch to GOCO and a grant application that because of the explosion of trail use and river use that we've had this summer related to the pandemic, our trails and our open spaces have seen so much use and we need some more investments in our infrastructure to support this increase in use. That top picture that you're seeing now is what you call social trails, where people have been accessing the river. And these kind of little social trails down from the levee to the river exist all the way up and down our river corridor in Almosa. And our pitch to GOCO is that by installing two permanent well-defined boat ramps, river access points, that will concentrate the impact of this human activity to those two boat launches and in turn should have a positive impact on our riparian habitat. So we're hopeful on that one, on that grant application. We hear back here in about a week. We also made the pitch that having the series of boat ramps will help aid in our economic recovery as we hopefully get through this pandemic. We're aware of some businesses in Almosa that would be very interested in stand-up paddleboard rentals and guided tours on the river. So that kind of stuff, kind of economic activity could spin off of these boat ramps, not to mention just the health and wellness benefits of our citizens. So next slide. Another main project that we've been working on is these Trailhead kiosks. Pictured on the right there, we had a local contractor told us these these structures, the maps that you're seeing on your screen. Those will be installed in these kiosks along with these other panels that you're seeing on the left. We have four of these different panels, which kind of highlight some environmental education about protected bird species that are present in the San Luis Valley, as well as some trail and river etiquette or stewardship, as well as some of our rules and regulations. And all of this stuff is all these panels are going to be, have been translated into Spanish as well. Next slide. So yeah, this is Blanca Vista Park located within the City Ranch on North River Road. And we got a grant from Colorado Parks and Wildlife through their Fishing is Fun program to install these ADA-accessible fishing jetties. And I think they look really nice and they turned out really well. And I've seen a lot of usage on them. I have noticed not just fishing, but people just hanging out there and congregating, taking senior pictures. I've seen what I think was an engagement photo session. People doing yoga early in the morning on those jetties. So I think it's just a real nice enhancement of that park. We also stocked upon more aggressively this year in in partnership with CPW, we had bass stocked in there and rainbow trout more aggressively this year. So I think both these fishing jetties and kind of the better fishing that's existed has really really activated that space in our community. Next slide. This is also Blanca Vista Park, just north of that fishing jetty. This is a ADA-accessible Crusher Fine Trail that we started last summer and have not finished it yet, but the intention is for it to go all the way around the pond. Again, some more good news from my partners like GOCO. They funded the San Luis Valley Greater Doors Trail Team to build the rest of the trail around this pond this fall. So that'll be completely covered by a GOCO grant. And by the end of October, this Crusher Fine Trail should extend around the entire pond and make a nice 1.6-mile loop around that pond. Next slide. Again, this is another redesigned map. Or it's actually probably the first real map that we've had of the newly acquired Almosa Riparian Park. And this is located up on Lakewood Drive on the north side of Almosa. And this property has had a lot of recreators throughout the last couple, last decades, biking and hiking and birding. And it's been it's great that we finally acquired this property and that it's officially a city park. But one of the things we're working with is trying to figure out which trails to keep because there's like a real spider web of social trails on this property. And we're trying to reduce some of the trails to limit the ecological impact. It's not necessary to have that many trails. And we're also just trying to more clearly define three different loops on that property so that it's more easily it's more easy to navigate for trail users. So we're currently in the process of closing down social trails as well as adding trail and defining those trails with wayfinding trail markers. So next slide. The work that's been done at the Almosa Riparian Park this summer has largely been done by these Southwest Conservation Corps trail crews as well as SLV Go's trail crew as well. So this summer, we removed about 1,600 feet of old barbed wire fencing that was no longer necessary in that property. We installed 3,700 feet of new wire fencing on the western edge of the property to delineate the property boundary. We built 3,700 feet of new trail and we closed off and revegetated 3,500 feet of trail that was redundant or parallel to other trails and no longer deemed necessary. And then we've installed 10-way finding markers at this point. So the next slide. This is the San Luis Valley Greater Doors Action Team, the trail crew that helped us build that wire fencing. They've been an excellent partner with us this summer. Next slide. This is a final redesigned trail map. And again, it's actually the first time we've had a trail map for, an official trail map for the Malm Trail. We have completed construction this spring of the loop number four. And we're still looking to get clearance from the National Park Service to build number two. We're waiting on some permitting things. But that trail number two should go in this fall, hopefully, or next spring. And we still haven't had a grand opening because of the pandemic. But we're hoping that next summer sometime, we'd be able to have a grand opening. And we'd certainly invite all the council members to participate in that. And next slide. This is just Trailhead Parking Lot at the Malm Network, another one of these kiosks that we're installing. Next slide. And then finally, this is just financial document that shows how some of these projects have been financed, mostly through the help of grant funding. Andy and I have really been cranking out the applications over the last year or so. Left to right shows the date. Sorry, the grants are organized left to right from when the grant funding was secured. So you can see just a combination of grant funding for trail stewardship projects, our boat ramps, the fishing piers and the trail kiosks. The two grants on the far right, the Chinchera Blanca Foundation and the GOCO Resilient Communities are still pending. But we're optimistic, I guess, about those. And just one comment about this. I just feel like there's been a real snowball effect and momentum involved in outdoor recreation projects. And the more grant funding we get from one project, we're able to use it as match for additional applications and it just kind of snowballs. And I think that it'll continue to roll and get bigger, hopefully. So that's my presentation. Yeah.
So thank you.
Thanks for having me here.
Thank you, John. And I think a few council members have their hands raised for the mayor to kind of handle that. But when John gave this presentation to the rec board, similar to Jess's, I think, you know, we talk about this trails going in or, you know, we're doing this out at the ponds. But actually seeing the pictures and what that means and then seeing, you know, something like this table of the pieces that have to come together and the coordination and the amount of work behind the scenes to get this to happen. I just really wanted council to be able to experience the same presentation so you can visualize and see how hard staff's working. But also, you know, as a reminder, John's position wouldn't even be here if we wouldn't have our community partners and if we wouldn't have partnered on the Inspire grant. And so through those actions, our part of outdoor recreation has really, really grown and it's been amazing to watch. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor to handle any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Heather. So council, I see your hands are raised and the order would be Counselor V. Hill, followed by Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor Daniel at this time. Go ahead, Counselor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Piggyback off of Ms. Daniel and Ms. Hensley with Jess and the workout area, the rec center. I'm really, really happy that you were all able to get this back open. People have been asking me for weeks now and I'm just glad you're able to do it and it's safe for folks. If people don't know, a lot of gyms and workout areas across the country and the valley in particular look like this. They have been transformed and they're safe. So I appreciate that and all your hard work, Jess. And then as far as the trails are concerned, Andy and John, I'm happy that you guys have taken the goals in our master plan and have worked to increase our trail system. So I really appreciate that. With COVID, over the last five, six months, my family and I are probably on the dike and the trails four or five times a week and the amount of people on there has grown exponentially. So just to see people out there recreating and that. And then so more work for your department to keep those trails safe and groomed and all that stuff. And all the work that you're doing has been awesome. And then my daughter caught her first fish in her life at the Block Vista Park on Father's Day. So that was awesome. So I know that that is becoming a great amenity to our community. And I think I might have had a conversation with Andy that day because I wondered if I can go fishing too, but he said no. But maybe in the future, because it's going to become a better fishery for trout, that maybe in the future, adults could fish there as well. So something like that. But just again, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work for our recreation department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Up next, we have Counselor Brawls.
I want to say thank you, Andy and John. Thanks for your hard work. Great to see that presentation. That helps a lot. And I echo what the other councilman has said. And I just want to applaud putting in the boat ramps. I've had people ask me for two years now if we was going to put boat ramps in so people could float to go up and down a real grand. So I applaud you on doing that and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Next, we have Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Griegego.
Thank you, Mayor. I did everything that Liz said was going to be true for me for Jess, so I didn't repeat it. But I am so impressed with the work that has been done at the rec center and I'm equally impressed with the work done on the trails this year. I have been running a lot more because that's what you do and to help with your mental health and things like that. So I've been running on our trails. I got a mountain bike this year and have learned how to mountain bike on our trails and have learned how to mountain bike in our parks because I go on the little park place at Cole Park before all the kids get there so I can practice. And it's just been wonderful to be able to have this and then to talk to people who are considering moving to the San Luis Valley about the trail system that we have and the work that has been put in. And going and walking and running the Riparian Park has been wonderful for me because I've been able to see the changes and see the new posts and the new signage. And it's just been a really, I think, invigorating project to watch when so many things haven't been invigorating in our community and not just our community, but like in the world because of the pandemic. And so I want to say thank you for making sure we continue to move forward and partnering because partnering is also what continues to move us forward and unifies us. So just really want to express my sincere thanks and it's beautiful and you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Griegego.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Heather for bringing this presentation to council. The mayor and I got an opportunity to see it at the rec board. And this job that Jess and John and Andy have done and their staff, it's incredible what they put together and how they put it together. One thing that I did mention at the rec board is our success in funding has been because we get this partnership together. The outside people see how we all work together and they are willing to fund people that are working together. And I think that comes from Andy's leadership and all his staff, how they're able to get along not only with all these different partners. And people see that and they want to give money to people that work together. So great job to all of you and all the other staff too that help move all that gym stuff around. And I bet you that was quite a task to get that organized. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Griegego. Okay, any other councils members would like to make any comments, raise your hand. Okay, since I don't see any hands raised, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. I too would like to thank all of you for the hard work and dedication that you've put into your jobs. Jess, John, and Andy, you all think outside the box so much and I really appreciate that because that's what helped our community to continue to grow and expand. So just keep up the great work in every area that you're working on and we wish you much success. Thank you so much.
Mayor, thank you. I just, I got one more plug for the other part of our team and that's Saleah and the library crew. They are reopening. They've scheduled to reopen on the 8th after Labor Day and that's big for our community. And it's like the rec center, it'll be limited and there'll be steps. But, you know, she's been just as diligent as Jess was. as as they just was on on our rec center plan and we'll certainly keep you all abreast of that as they reopen with limited hours. But they'll also keep curbside delivery going too for those who just don't feel comfortable. So it's not like we're just dropping what we're doing now to move into a limited reopening. So there's options there. Thank you all for your time. I know there was a lot of time tonight, but we really appreciate the support and you know, we we love living in Alamosa, so thank you.
Thank you and keep up the great work. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That brings us to the next item on our agenda. Item C two fire, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number twenty 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 and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County and the San Luis Valley Regional Airport for mutual aid in the provisions of aircraft rescue and firefighting services at the San Luis Valley Recreation of San Luis Valley Regional Airport. Leave that shoot, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council. We did have to make a slight adjustment on the agreement per the FAA request. We found that out basically over the weekend, so that was done on Monday. That is on page three, which would be item number nine, which calls for the city to provide a fire engine during the commercial flight standbys in the event that the RV truck would be out of service for repairs or any other reason, if it's broke or anything like that. So we did get that added in. The county has since signed the agreement and other than that, it is the same agreement that was presented on the first reading. So with that, I will take any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you, chief. So what I am going to do right now is I am going to open it up for a public hearing. And then I will turn it over to council for comments after we've given the public an opportunity to respond. So at this time, we would like to open up the public hearing and the second reading for ordinance number twenty 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 and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County and the San Luis Valley Regional Airport for mutual aid in the provisions of aircraft rescue and firefighting services at the San Luis Valley Regional Airport. If we have anyone in attendance who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please do so by raising your hand and Ms. Martinez will allow you to speak. Ms. Martinez, will you give them instructions on how to raise your hand to participate in this hearing?
Yeah, if you're on the telephone, dial star nine and it'll raise your hand. You're on the Zoom app, go ahead and click the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Doesn't look like we have anybody raising their hand to speak.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Seeing that we have no hands raised, our we're just going to assume that no one has any comments at this time. So I will now close the public hearing and turn it back over to council at this time. Okay, council members, if anyone have any comments or raise your hand so I can recognize you. Okay, councillor Daniel.
I don't have any comments, Mayor. I just wanted to make the motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty for this intergovernmental agreement for the regional airport mutual aid.
Thank you all. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion at this time? I don't see any hands raised. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Councillor Hensley?
Yes.
Councillor Griegego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councillor Broyles?
Yes.
Councillor Carson?
Yes.
Councillor Daniel?
Yes.
Councillor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief, and thank you, Ms. Martinez. That brings us to the next item on our agenda under City Manager Legal, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number twenty one dash twenty twenty and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Water Activity Enterprise Special Improvement District number six of the Rio Grande Water Conservation District to cover the city's municipal wells in the district's annual replacement plan pending approval of the city's plans for augmentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We went into some of the background for this intergovernmental agreement when it was presented to council on first hearing, so I won't reiterate that, although I'm happy to take questions. Just in brief summary, what this agreement will do is enable the city to cover the interim period between now when when the application is pending and such time as it may be finally decreed, which is likely to be a couple of years from now. The city can either do that this way or do that through a substitute water supply plan. Either one of those would have to be in place by May of next year. And this one, this one, I think, is a win-win situation for both the city and subdistrict number six. So I think we need to have the public hearing and then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mrs. Suiso. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance number twenty one twenty twenty and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Water Activity Enterprise Special Improvement District number six of the Rio Grande Water Conservation District to cover the city's municipal wells in the district's annual replacement plan pending approval of the city's plan for augmentation. At this time, if you would like to make any comments, please raise your hand by using the raise your hand feature. And our city clerk, Ms. Martinez, will recognize you and allow you to make comments. Okay. I don't see any hands raised. So at this time, we will close the public hearing and I will bring it back to council for comments. Okay.
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, councillor.
It's just hard for me to raise my hand on a laptop. I'm trying to find it and it's so tiny. I just just wanted to know if if I just wanted to say if nobody had comments, I'd make a motion that we approve. This under governmental. I mean, this ordinance authorizing the intergovernmental agreement, inclusion of the city's municipal wells in subdistrict six, partial twenty twenty to twenty one annual replacement plan. Thank you, Dave. I just wanted to.
I'd second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Councillor Daniel?
Yes.
Councillor Carson?
Yes.
Councillor V Hill?
V Hill.
Yes.
Councillor Broyles?
Yes.
Councillor Hensley?
Yes.
Councillor Griegego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, council. The next item is item D, request for a motion to relieve city staff from enforcing the health mandate to wear mask outdoors. Usually on the agenda, we would refer comments to our city manager, our city attorney when it comes to bringing up idle items that are listed on our agenda. But since this item was brought up by a city council member, David Brawls, we are going to allow council member David Brawls to introduce the reason why he made this recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mayor and city council and the public. No, my initial concern has been that, you know, we did, we lost the rodeo because of the where the mask man mandate or at least a major reason. And also the parade, didn't have the parade because of wearing the mask. But yet we don't enforce the mask when we have peaceful protests. And so that's kind of been and I just don't like the intruding of government into our personal lives. So that's that's kind of the where it comes where where I came from. But on secondhand, after hearing the public comments, and I really do appreciate their comments, I I know it takes time and I we've heard from healthcare professionals, the business the business people, the educational people. And so really, I I don't know what protocol is, but I don't see a need, at least my my concerns have been satisfied and I don't see a need to place this on the agenda. And so and based on the comments that, you know, people people want to keep the mask mandate in place and I appreciate that. And so based on their comments and I feel like I represent the public and the public wants to keep it. So like I said, I would, whatever protocol is, you know, not have it placed on the agenda for next week, next city council meeting.
Thank you, councillor Brawls. Since you did bring that bring this up and I see a couple of council members who would like to make some comments, I am going to allow them to make those comments and then we will respectfully accept your request to not place this item on the agenda. But I'll first turn it back over to the council members. We have councillor Carson, followed by councillor Daniel, followed by councillor V Hill, who would like to make some comments. Councillor Carson, you're up.
I I just want to start out by saying that the people's fears in regards to COVID and and their precautions with masks and every other precaution that we take, you know, including good hygiene, which should be practiced normally anyway, and hand washing and social distancing. I think people are doing a good job, but you know, people's fears are valid and and we we've been bombarded with with COVID and and COVID horrors for 10 months almost. And I or no one else has the right or the duty to judge another person for them, no matter what side of the issue they're on. I want to start out by saying that. And secondly, I do want to say that even though David councillor Broyles withdrew his his motion to place that item on the agenda, I just want people to keep it, you know, on their radar. I I know that we can't talk about it after this because at this point it would be shot down, but my fears are that we are in a in a scenario that there is a lot of government overreach because I understand and respect people in the health cares healthcare field's opinion. But I myself have read studies and and do read, you know, documentation from the World Health Organization, the CDC. And again, these are documents that I've got from these organizations and including the CDC's release of information that, you know, ninety four percent of the people that have listed as COVID deaths had comorbidities, ninety four percent. That means six percent actually died of only COVID. You know, the numbers of the flu, this twenty two thousand people died of the flu. That's a record, I think, while since records have been kept. So the reality is is that even though there is a ton of fear around COVID, we do need to watch that fine line. You know, what we do as as government entities and and how we're we're treating the public. I personally have a hard time wearing a mask. I, you know, I have a condition that that really makes it hard for me to have a mask on. I do it out of a duty to my community and other people, but I know there's a lot of people that feel that way. And I know there's a lot of people that that called me this week that had those same valid concerns, you know, on both sides. And maybe I had more people calling me on this side of the argument because they felt more comfortable talking to me about that. But the reality is is that I just think we need to watch that that overreach. People, I think, misunderstand what we were actually going to talk about. Not against enforcement of masks at all. I think, you know, again, I'll reiterate this. People have the right to ask you to wear a mask. We've had no shirt, no shoes, no service in place for, you know, decades. Like someone said earlier, we've had a a lot of, we've asked people to do self-practice, good self-care for in many different ways. Again, good self-care, that may mean wearing a mask to one person and that may mean not wearing a mask to another person because they don't feel like breathing in whatever they feel they're breathing in or whatever fear they've been instilled by whatever they've read or whatever they've studied. Again, I think people just need to mind everybody's personal space. And as you feel the right to wear a mask and want other people to wear a mask, respect that other people also have that adverse feeling that they don't want to wear a mask and they may not feel that a mask is doing everything that people are saying it's doing. You know, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this away right now, but I just want people to say, I mean, people to go and read for themselves, you know, this, like I say, the World Health Organization and the the Center for Disease Control have publicly stated and these are documents that you can download yourself. This is a social experiment and it is being, it is, I I understand, I see people's body language when I say that and I understand people don't like that. But again, that is not an opinion. That is a document that I have shared with you and you've seen it. Now, whether you like that or not, it's it's ink doesn't lie. And it's not my ink. It's not crazy councillor Carson saying that. It's the the World Health Organ izations. Now, I'm just saying, again, for everything that someone reads to one effect, there's people that read things to the other effect. So respect people and their personal opinions and space while you're out there, you know, in society today in general, because people are stressed out. So just just keep that in mind, everyone, as we pass through our lives and go through our day daily business. There's people on both sides of this argument and please don't take it upon yourself to be mask fully or or, you know, when people are doing things outside you don't agree with, follow the mandate and the mandate clearly says that's what we should be doing right now. And within reason, the mandate works. I think when we start getting excessive, we're going to have to have these conversations again. And I think as reasonable people, we will have them when that time comes, if people are being unreasonable. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, councillor Carson. Up next, we have councillor Daniel, followed by councillor Hensley, followed by councillor Griegego.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I really appreciate councillors Broyles and Carson for the comments that they have made and shared because I know this is something that is really close to you too. And so I appreciate that. I did blink when you said the social experiment thing, councillor Carson, because I've read that same thing. So we know that we've just interpreted those second and third lines different and that I believe the first line of that whole statement. So we'll just go with that. But the the part that I want to just kind of clarify, because there were some statements made earlier and I want to make sure that I truly understand where we're coming from in the mandate. And I believe so Commissioner Stigman said about what the mandate is saying and that it was, you know, outdoors. My understanding, though, is that we are still under the twenty twenty eight also, not just the the one that was redone, but the twenty twenty eight that is the safer at home and in the vast great outdoors. And that one does have the regulations about the bit larger groups and things like that. And so I just wanted to clarify that. That was something that stuck out to me because that was really the guidance that we gave the rodeo and that is where that language came from. And that is the guidance we've been giving to people. So I want to make sure that we're clear on what is still being asked of us from the state, asked of the state from the the governor. And really do, I do think it's still about the same thing that we talked about two weeks ago, everyone. I I think it is that education and the asking and the being respectful and not, you know, being judgy and making it a line in the sand, but this really about being a safer community and a healthier community for all of us and trying to do that in as much of a unified way as possible without creating these divisive lines. And so I just I appreciate the comments and again, the public for coming out and I appreciate the the councillors comments who that has happened before, but I would just like a little bit of clarification if either Heather or councillor Suiso could help us with that, that would that would help me. Thank you.
So councillor Daniel, you you are correct in regards that there is a section in the orders that deal with what is called events. And it's both indoor and outdoor. And so when it's an outdoor event, there's limitations in the number, there's expectations for social distancing per the size of the area and it does require face masks. And as as councillor Broyles indicated, that's where some of our event organizers were running into surprises because it is for outdoor events as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Daniel, are you finished? So okay, good. Thank you. So I'll move on down the list. Up next, we have councillor Hensley, followed by councillor Griegego, and then followed by councillor V Hill. Councillor Hensley, you're up.
So I will say that I have also been concerned about the overreach. It is something that I really am torn on. I feel that the idea of a lot of people I know. that the idea of a lot of people I know, um, in regards to may not agree with the mask mandate, but out of respect will wear it. And most people I know, that idea of doing it so that things can keep going. I think for me right now, I've heard both sides, but I do think the timing, because we do have K-12, Trinidad, Adam State, all of them coming back. I obviously am at Adam State and I will tell you, the students are really happy to be in the classroom. And so I also look at it that I know, um, at this point, it's not like our police have really been running up and down the streets or doing things in a sense of micromanaging the situation. And from how I understand it is that it's, you know, if they get the calls, things like that, they follow up. They're trying to educate. It is, it's a fine line and obviously we have people on both sides. It is a very polarizing situation. And so for me right now, um, I think I'm at that point. It's tough, but I think it is that idea of keeping things going. I, what I don't want to do is send the message that, that it's okay and that it should go to nobody wearing a mask or that type of thing. I, from what I've read also, the expectation is not 100% compliance. It is that idea of trying to have as close to 100% as possible, but nobody's expecting that. And so my thought here is that I guess sort of what Michael said in regards to respecting each other and those values. And, um, hopefully things continue to die down. We've had a really, we haven't had many cases. And so hopefully the next few weeks will change. But I, I do say that I do have concern over the overreach and we'll see where things go in the future.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Up next, we have Counselor Griegego, followed by Counselor V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank first, uh, the people that took some time out tonight to voice their opinion. And I, it, there was a couple that said there, it is our responsibility to take care of this community and make sure that it's safe. So for us to do, to go against a mandate that, that has been handed to us, I, I, I personally thought it was wrong. And I think it's, it's working, you know? A lot of people talk that there's not that many people at the hospital and stuff. Well, the reason they're not there is because the masks are working. Had we not do, had we geared away from the masks and stuff, I think we'd have some problems there at the hospital. And I, I keep on hearing that we lost the rodeo. We didn't lose the rodeo. I think there, the honesty of the Honeycutts, they read the mandate and they said, hey, a city facility, if we can handle it the way it's supposed to be handled, we're not gonna, we're not gonna mess up that, uh, that, uh, teamwork that we have with the city. We'd rather take it out there and, and I, there was a couple of times out there that people told me that, that the Honeycutts, uh, were saying on, on the mic, put your mask on and they were booing them. So they made an effort, you know, and their honesty, I, I really appreciate that. You know, next year, I'm sure they'll be back, you know? And we'll hop up, whatever we can do to hop them out will help them out. But I think it's so important for us to make sure that our community, not only here in Alamos, but the whole San Luis Valley is, is safe. And if the building's putting on a little mask on, well, be it, you know? So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Griegego. Next, we have, um, Counselor V Hill, followed by Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments and a couple of questions. First, I want to acknowledge, uh, someone who spoke tonight, Leroy Chacon. He's, I'm going to be straight up, he's my next door neighbor. And he was the, the gentleman who said that he had, uh, COVID. And a few times during that, during his sickness, I had to go, uh, get things from him. I got him lunch one day and went and got his medications for him and his wife one day and dropped it off at his, um, at his front door. So, uh, and he was super nervous about speaking tonight. So I just wanted to acknowledge him and thank you, uh, for him for doing that. That's a, that's some pretty good stuff. Like I said, two weeks ago at our other meeting, I want to, uh, acknowledge and thank everybody who, who spoke up tonight and sent emails and letters and that. And I want to say the same thing tonight for everybody who spoke. I want to thank Mr. Broyles for, uh, acknowledging, uh, all these comments. Um, and then I guess the first, uh, it was said earlier and I think it's really important and there, there still might be some confusion out there. Eric or Eric, can you tell us specifically where it says, in what order, what mandate, what piece of legislation or whatever it might be, where there, there is supposed to be mask-wearing outdoors in large groups of people?
Well, there are a blizzard of public health orders that come out from the Colorado Department of Public Health and executive orders that come out from the governor. And it certainly can be difficult to keep up with them. But I believe Counselor Daniel was correct when she said that really the current, uh, public health order that we're under is 20-28, which, uh, does limit the, um, outdoor mask requirements by saying that you should try to limit your group size to under 10 and be socially distanced. And if you're having events, there are various number limits for events outdoors, that are much higher than that. Events can be up to, I think it's 175. Uh, and even more than that, if you have multiple segments of your outdoor area where those people can be. And at events, uh, both participants and, well, participants need not necessarily be masked if they're presenters, but, um, spectators should be wearing masks according to that order. I, I think the best way to put this is if you've got questions about sorting through the public health orders or the governor's orders, give the Alamosa, uh, Department of Public Health a call and they can shed light on that better, I'm sure than I can. The executive orders are a little harder to keep up with for me because it's just harder to figure out what got amended where and, and what superseded what. The public health department orders, I think, are a little clearer. And when Commissioner Sigmund talked about the requirement that if you're standing in line, uh, waiting on public transportation, you should be masked. I think that is out of actually the executive orders rather than the public health orders. Beyond that, I couldn't, I, I couldn't even pretend to give you a breakdown on what all of the requirements are. But I will say this, um, I think all counselors got, and I don't know how many people in the audience, got, um, a stakeholder survey from the state. They are looking at changing the way those orders change over time. And I think, uh, when I looked at what their proposal was, it, it looks hopeful to me that the state will be moving to a system that is much clearer and much simpler and much more responsive to local conditions on the ground. So, um, I'm, I'm really looking forward to that coming out because I think it'll help everybody keep track of what's going on with respect to what particular kind of restrictions are applying in each community.
Hey, I, I appreciate that and I, I apologize if I, if I put you on the spot. If you could please, you and/or Heather, uh, tomorrow, tell us specifically where that's at. And the reason being is because I had, uh, two business owners ask me today where that, where that is. So I want to, I want to respect their wishes and get that information to them specifically. Does that come, is that a, so then the public, the public health, from the state or from the county?
From the state. The county has not issued any county-specific public health orders. So what we've got are two sources of COVID orders. One is the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment. And they issue a series of orders, um, that are continually updated and continually extended. The one that deals with, uh, outdoor events and things like that is, is Order 20-28 currently. And it keeps that, the way they do it is they keep the same number. They just keep amending what that order number has in it. The governor's executive orders change numbers all the time. So his mask order started at 110 and it went to 138 and it went to 164. I keep track of them by a webpage that's covid19.colorado.gov. Uh, and that if you go there, you will have tabs that you can find, uh, public health and executive orders. And they list them together with the titles of each of those orders, which helps explain what they're about.
Excuse me, Eric? Is that there a link, uh, well, there, there's a link on, on our, our city page to the county, county public health and that. Actually, I used it yesterday, all the, those state orders and, and all that information. And you can get there right from our city site.
So there is, there is language in there about, uh, outdoor masks in groups?
Yeah, it's 175 people. And if you're going to have more than 175 people, you have to have another section and section it off. But it's, yeah, the max outdoor event is 175, indoors 50.
And Counselor V Hill and, and Eric, I did forward the link that Eric was referencing to all of city council just now, as you, you requested, Counselor V Hill. Um, I'm not sure if one of the businesses was, um, Square Peg. I did follow up with him already and sent him that link as well.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm just asking these questions because business owners have asked me. So I will, uh, do my job and get that to them, uh, uh, tomorrow morning or tonight. Okay, the next thing I have is, um,
Let me just also say, I went to our webpage and we do link to the governor's executive orders. We may link to the CD-PHE orders, but I didn't see the link immediately. So if we don't, we'll, we'll probably update it to link to those as well.
Please do, because the, the, the last confusion that we can help with folks, the better for all, everybody involved. Okay, now, now next, can, can, um, Mr. Grego brought up the rodeo and I want to bring up the parade. Just so, uh, uh, again, I talked to somebody today, who probably may have been on, on the other side about, you know, Ms. Thomas talks about the other side. And I 100% respect that side too, and I want to listen to them. But this was somebody from the other side and, and have, have, having some questions about the parade. If, if I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, communicate what happened with the parade. And if I misspeak, Heather or Eric, please step in. Because this is how I, this is how I think the parade went down. We're talking about the July 4th parade. And we brought up to council that, um, uh, in the, I think at the second meeting of June, if we could have a, a parade or not. And we were, and it was told to us that, uh, to have the parade route along the ma- the main, main street, you need to have CDOT approval a month in advance. Well, we, they could not get that approval because at that time, Governor Polis had, uh, the, the orders in place that parades weren't allowed. Is that correct? No, I'm wrong.
That had nothing to do with CDOT approval. CDOT approval would just take a look at if they have a right traffic plan in place, what time of day, all of those types of things. So the, the health orders or the governor's orders had nothing to do with the review of CDOT.
Well, the parade organizers didn't get the stuff to CDOT in time?
Correct. Now, normally the parade is organized by the chamber. And so, um, the, the timeframe in order to get it to CDOT and get approved, we were still at the stay-at-home. And, and so we hadn't gone into, it, it just, the timeframe didn't work for them to be able to get something to CDOT in, in order to get approval. And so that is something that's completely unrelated to COVID.
Okay, so then, um, then just a, I remember a couple of days after that meeting, uh, the governor said parades were okay, right? And then so we offered the organizers Fourth Street? And, and they didn't want to go with that?
So, um, what we explained is they need, if, because they probably would not be likely to be able to get CDOT approval because of the timeframe, that they could move it to Fourth Street. And as long as, you know, when they have to submit insurance and what their traffic plans are and all of that kind of stuff, they also would need to submit how they were going to comply then with the governor's orders. And so how are they going to comply with the 175 of different sections and, and all of those types of things? And so as long as they submitted that and, and there was going to be a good faith effort, then we absolutely would have approved the permit.
Perfect. And then so, um, just to clarify, a clarifying question is, before COVID, if you have, if you want any group who wants to have a parade, they have to go get a permit through the city, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And if I could explain as well, since this seemed to be a topic that came up at the last meeting, um, there's not really a ticket for having a, um, parade without a parade permit. Um, so going forward, if we have a group that, that wants to have, um, a parade, but they haven't done what they're supposed to do in order to get a parade permit, obviously we won't be issuing a permit. But the point of getting a permit is you get city resources that then allows it to be a parade. So it means we dedicate public works and police staff in order to block off traffic, in order to ensure that dedicated use of that street for a parade and, and kind of ensure the safety and, and all of that. Without a parade permit and going forward, we will not be providing those services. So individuals are still welcome to, to have what they would consider a parade, but they will need to follow the rules of the road, the traffic laws. So if there's a red light, they need to stop or they need to recognize there might be pedestrians crossing. Um, there might be other vehicles on that road. So that's the point of having the parade permit. So it's, it's more that if you want the use of city staff in order to guarantee the use of that street and to block it off, that's why you get a parade permit. And so we're just going back to how it was even before COVID and, and people need to be aware that there is that CDOT requirement. And hopefully they can get organized. All of our normal parade organizers are fully aware of everything that's required and they've always been really great partners. And so, you know, the city's never been against parades. It's just making sure that the right things are in place and that they've submitted plans on how they will comply with what, whatever order we're under at the time.
Yep, thank you, Heather. And so, uh, to add to that, I believe Mr. Grego is, is one of the organizers for the Veterans Day Parade. And I believe they're already starting to work on that a little bit. So they can do it, uh, so they can pull the permit and, and, and they can comply with the governor's orders and, and have a parade like they normally would. All right, thank you. And then, uh, the enforcement of this, uh, so this might be for Heather, sorry, I have a lot. So the enforcement of this, um, I guess to Chief or Heather, have we given any tickets or have we reprimanded anybody for a gathering outside?
No, but I want to make sure we're fully transparent and, and, and fair in my response here. So how this was going to work from an outdoor perspective? So for example, if we had an event that was a one-day event and they were not in compliance, so say they submit the plan, they say, here's what we're going to do, all of this, and it all checks those boxes off. We, we allow them to rent the park or rent the rodeo stays, space or anything like that. If they submit the plans and we're good to go, but if during the event, they're not in compliance, then we are faced either with needing to close down the event, if it's a single-time event. We came close to that with the first one that, that kind of was out the gates. But by the time it was going to need to be closed down, it was an hour within the event closing anyways. And so we didn't actually have to do that. Where Ms. Honeycutt was uncomfortable because their event is actually on multiple days. So my explanation to her is, you know, if on your first day, if, you know, if we go out there and it looks like there's mostly compliance, we're not going to be counting people, but if we look out there and more than half aren't wearing masks, we've got issues and, and that means there's not compliance. So what we would do is talk to you as an organizer and say, what is your plan to get better compliance for the next event? And then if it again didn't happen, then we would have to strongly consider not letting the other events happen. And for her, um, I think she realized that, that there probably would be some issues with not having compliance with people wearing it. She didn't feel comfortable, um, asking someone to leave if they weren't wearing the mask, which I, I fully understand and, and respect. But she also couldn't risk not having the rodeo. Like that type of event professionally, you, you can't book them and then not have it. And so that's then what the tipping point was for her to, to move it off of the city facilities is because she, she did not want to risk not being able to have those future ones. So no, we have not ticketed anyone. But I want to be very transparent with those conversations we had with the organizers.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, and, um, so I, I, I choose to wear a mask when I'm in, when I'm around a large group of people. When I'm in, when I'm around a large group of people, I'm a teacher and all, we're we're we wear masks. And when we're inside with our students, they're wearing masks and it's just the way it goes. And if you look at the data, the numbers in Colorado and the valley, they're super low. Now, you know, the masks are probably playing a piece to that. It might not be the whole thing. It might be a combination of that and the social distancing and, uh, non, not not large groups gathering together. All this is playing a piece to it. And I think the timing of it right now to to get rid of that, um, is is not responsible, especially with the large influx of people at Adam State. And with all the schools coming back together, I don't think it's the right time to be doing this. As a caller said at the beginning of a meeting, I think a couple of people said, you know, let let's see what happens and maybe, for me, maybe look at this again in a couple of months. But right now, it's, I don't think it's the right thing to do. And those are my comments. And I appreciate everybody, uh, speaking tonight. And I appreciate Mr. Broyles taking back, uh, his, uh, this pursuit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Okay, I don't see any other council members' hands raised, so I'll go ahead and wrap this, uh, segment up. I would like to thank all the people who participated tonight, uh, on the Zoom meeting or either called in. I also would like to thank all the people who sent emails and text messages and made phone calls to reach out to, uh, council members. Your voices matter to Alamosa City Council. So continue to reach out to us and 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 share information that you feel is important to to you. And you will see that we were trying to do our best to do what's right, just and fair for the entire community. As an elected official, I believe that public safety is priority number one. And we have mandates in place right now to ensure that we, uh, continue to, um, look out for the the best of our public in regards to to public safety. And I believe that we should continue to educate the public, as well as follow through on the requirements of the mandates. Here's why it's important. Right now, our schools are opening up. We want our businesses to stay open. The university is opening, the college, um, and we want our community to continue to move forward. So at this time, I am so glad that council has, uh, come to the conclusion that we're gonna continue to, uh, follow the mandate that is in place right now to make that, make sure that we ensure the public safety for all of the residents in Alamosa. All right, so that brings us to the next item on the agenda. And that brings us to committee reports. Do we have anyone with committee reports? If so, raise your hand. Okay, Counselor Hensley?
Yes, uh, I was at golf board and, uh, we're on off season rates now. And just as a, uh, a report back is that the Kayler did happen, which is the big golf tournament. And, um, many of the golfers that came to that said it is the best the course has looked in many, many years. And they really enjoyed it. So what's really nice is that even during these tough times, that people have been really appreciating the golf course and have really enjoyed it. And I want to thank also, uh, Andy and his crew and and obviously the people that work at the golf course. And what a great job they're doing there. And it's great to have such a positive and upbeat group that are working together, uh, with great ideas and things like that. So I just wanted to report that.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So we did not have the homeless coalition meeting, um, this past month. But Holly, I was asked by a member of the public, what, um, or Heather too, what seats are open on that board? And I didn't know if you guys knew off the top of your head or if you could email me. I have some interested people in the community and I want to make sure it's for the right spots.
I think it's probably best if we can email you, because I think it's a few and, but then we had some appointments, so it's changed. So
Okay.
if we can email you.
That is perfect. That's no problem. Um, and I did attend the Housing Authority Board. Um, I I did have to leave a little bit early, so I was unable to stay till the end of the meeting. But they are doing some amazing work trying to meet the needs of their, um, residents and really building some really strong ties, I think, with them and looking at the resources that they can provide for their residents. So I I've been really impressed with the way the board is functioning and the way the leadership team within the Housing Authority is trying to ensure that their residents get the best services and supports, um, for them. So, uh, but it was a good, the piece of the meeting that I could stay for was really good.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised, so I'll move on down the agenda to, uh, staff announcements.
So Mayor, um, to my knowledge, I don't think we have any staff announcements. Obviously, we had a, um, our ode to Parks and Recreation tonight. So thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, Ms. Brooks. Okay, that brings us down to, uh, council, uh, comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to reach out and tell Andrea Bachmann, uh, congratulations and her willingness to serve on the historic board. Appreciate you. I think she's a great candidate and I, we, uh, I totally support her and I think she'll do a great job. So just want to tell her, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Broyles. So I see the hands up here. We have, um, Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor V. Hill, Counsel, followed by Counselor Daniel. Counselor Hensley?
Uh, just a couple of things real quick. So I did attend the CML virtual conference. And I know it was not near the same as when we go to the conference. But honestly, there were some really good breakout sessions that I really enjoyed. The new president of CML has an initiative, uh, with the idea of looking at diversity, um, inclusivity and things like that. And so we're gonna see where that's gonna go. Uh, and like I say, it was, it's not the same. And I'm really hopeful next year we go back to the way it was. But it was, it was really well done and, um, I got some great things from it. The other thing is schools are coming back and obviously Trinidad, Adam State are going full force. It's really exciting to see students around. It's great to see K-12. I know here in Alamosa, all the students are having their very first day this week. Um, and so just keeping fingers crossed that things continue to go smooth, but it's neat to see that happening. So just wishing the best to all the students.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor, uh, V. Hill, followed by Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to piggy off of what Ms. Hensley just said, because that's, that's where I was going with the schools coming back. Uh, there seemed to be, uh, I don't know about you guys, but there's like a different type of juice in the town right now with all the college students and they're getting going and it's vibrant and I love it. And everybody's going back to school, uh, K-12 across the valley. And, uh, it can be a little bit nervous. It can be a little bit, um, walking on eggshells a little bit, but we're all doing the best that we can, teachers and parents and families and and administration, and we're all doing it together. I think that's what, again, what we all said in the beginning of the pandemic is we have to stick together. And I think we're doing that. We gotta keep it going. Like we all said, uh, valley strong, Alamosa strong, all that stuff. And then just a quick shout out to, uh, one of our, uh, employees, uh, Daniel Montano. He might get embarrassed that I'm saying this, but, and I don't know if he was, he should have done this. But I was helping a coach at Adam State move into her new building. And she has this bed that's like four hundred pounds and I couldn't lift it. I was struggling and he was driving right by and I said, hey, you know, and he stopped real quick and he helped me move the bed into the house real quick during, uh, I think right before lunch or something like that. So just, that's what we're about, is service and helping people out. And I appreciate that. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you. I actually have a few, um, updates. Uh, I'm always pleased when we have as much public input as we did tonight. So thank you, everyone, for that. Something I think that has been important to us as a community and myself personally is suicide prevention. And so September is Suicide Prevention Month. Um, we know that this is an important topic every day, but it is a time for us to work with allies, uh, reach out to loved ones who have lost someone to death by suicide. And really to create a space for people to discuss their concerns and talk about their pain and find a safe space to talk about the that they may maybe thinking about killing themselves. This year camp, this year's campaign nationally is be the one to. Um, and it is, let's be the one to ask if someone's thinking about killing themselves. Let's be the one to be there with them so they can share with us. Let's be the one to keep them safe, um, and help them stay connected. If you're not comfortable talking directly and openly and honestly about suicide, I urge you to find someone in your life who is. So you can either make sure you have someone to help you have those conversations or look up some things online. Really, the thing that you can do the most of is listen. In our state, we have a statewide crisis line. The number is eight four 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 nine three T A L K or eight two five five. Um, and so, and you can text that number, you can text to three eight two five five. People are there twenty four seven. There are peers, people who have gone through experiencing suicidality. There are trained counselors, licensed professional counselors, licensed clinical social workers who work that line. We know that with the challenges and things that people have been experiencing during COVID, that this thought to these, this pain, the stress that they've been under, suicide may feel like more of an option for people than it has in the past to them. And so I just urge all of us in our community to take some time to learn a little bit about how to ask and create space for people who may be experiencing these things and be brave and ask. You can ask a stranger, you can ask a loved one, you can ask a friend, you can ask a coworker if they're doing okay. And then all you really need to do is be there and listen with them and and then hook them up with support. We have twenty four seven emergency services within the San Luis Valley provided by the San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group. They will come out, they can do phone evaluations, they can meet with anybody, um, to determine if they need to be hospitalized due to their suicide concerns. So, or if you are a survivor of someone who was close to you or you knew someone who completed suicide, uh, please do reach out and, um, get the support that you need. And if there's anyone on the phone or on Zoom or on council who is thinking about suicide, I urge you to reach out to someone and just share that with them. So, and I am available for those calls. Your life is important. And you need to know that there are people who will listen and people who care for you to be here. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego?
I wasn't gonna prolong this meeting, but, uh, I had a question maybe for Heather or Eric. What's the update on the variants that, uh, Ellen and we're gonna submit with the changes and stuff? Have they done that or? Does anybody know?
Um, I'm not sure if if Dawn knows, um, the, all I have are the emails that I've been forwarding to to council. And so I think they've been monitoring it and they've had a group that they pulled together to set, you know, how they're gonna do testing, what their responses will be, trying to make sure they have the pieces in place. I, the last I heard is that it it should be soon that they submit it. But our positivity rate on the last go around might have been a little bit too high. Not dramatically, but just a little nudge too high above that five percent. So, um, that's the little bit I know. I don't know if Counselor Carson, you were raising your hand or or Chief Chapman, if you know anything.
I know, I know from what I read yesterday, at the state level, they're gonna change something probably by the end of the week, that's gonna make it to to where our variants will kind of automatically be under that threshold. And I think it'll pass, uh, from what I understood. Uh, but Heather is right. We were yesterday above that, uh, five percent threshold by point one three. But I think, uh, what I I I saw your, your face there, Heather, I think what it is, is that they're gonna raise that threshold from the point five or from the five, from what I, so we would then be under by default. That that's kind of the way I understood it. Don't quote me on that. I did, you know, I did see that yesterday. So hopefully it will pass. But like I say, it kind of being all under this new rule, they're gonna make it easier for variances to pass from what I, from what I took yesterday.
So my face
And I apologize. I'm I'm having some back pain, so I'm having to kind of run and stretch while I'm sitting here, because it's very uncomfortable. I've been in the chair way too much.
So So Counselor Carson, my face was more on the use of automatic. I mean, I think that if we are meeting those thresholds, I think there's still a communication with the the state Department of Health that still needs to occur. So I don't, I don't think it's necessarily automatic. There's still that communication between our public health and the state. But it's supposedly, when I've looked at the same stuff you did, it should be much clearer and and easier to judge where you are on that, on that little bar type of thing. And Chief Chapman, I see you unmuted yourself.
Yeah, just, I don't have much other than I think it's probably gonna be sometime next week before anything gets submitted. From the sounds of things.
So, correct me, if I may, uh, what's taking so long? You know, we got denied, we got denied here almost, it's been a couple of months or so.
And It it's that threshold, Charlie, it's that point, that five, five percent threshold. We've been above that. And right now, we're at five point one three. And until you get under the the five percent, you can't meet that that variance. And so that's been the issue. But like I said, and Heather, I didn't mean automatically. I meant that by default, if they raise that number to ten percent, we'd be under that threshold right now, even if they go to seven point five. But, uh, that that's what I meant. And and that's what's taken so long, Charlie, is that we've been above that threshold slightly. So they can't get it passed.
Thank you.
Well, I think the other part too is there's a difference between what they had to submit to be, to get a variance and what they had to submit to be into the, um, protect your neighbors phase. Um, I think the the protect your neighbors phase requires a much more robust planning as far as for testing and and measurements and and those types of things. And so there was, from when they submitted their variance, there was a change then to have that category of protect your neighbors as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands raised, so I'll go ahead and wrap it up. So we could, um, in the meeting here, but I just wanted to comment in regards to, uh, what Counselor Daniel said or in regards to Suicide Prevention Month. Right now, there are a lot of people out there that that are experiencing a lot of anxiety, tons of fear and a lot of pain. So I encourage everyone, whenever possible, to listen to people who come to you. I remember my dad told me once, he said, Ty, he says, son, always be willing to listen when someone comes to you, uh, who are going through problems or facing a crisis, because you never know if you're gonna be the last person that person gets to speak to before they do something drastic. So I encourage each one of you, uh, entire staff, to be that listening ear and be able to share information where people can get that help if they're feeling to a point to where, uh, they feel they have no other option but suicide. But thank you all so very much. Uh, we made it to the end of this meeting and guess what? It's not midnight. So thank you all so very much. Have a super fantastic evening and don't let anybody steal your joy. Talk to you later.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.